We call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, June 19, 2017 to order. I'd like to ask that you all rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight as the city council meets in our regular session, we are ever thankful, as is obvious by the large crowd that we have in the audience, of the number of men and women who step forward and who, on a daily basis, protect our community from crime and fires and emergencies and all kinds of other assignments that they are given. We are ever mindful of the dangers that go with their job, and we are thankful, extremely thankful, for the outstanding talented individuals who have stepped forward and have become members or are about tonight to become members of the Batavia Emergency Services Teams. We are always appreciative of all the good things that they do on a day-to-day basis, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission in protecting our community. Also tonight, we are appreciative of the presence of the Batavia Historical Society, who is here with some exciting news about the future of Batavia and its love of history. And we are just most thankful that we have such a dedicated group of people within our community who are here to do whatever they can to help Batavia recall and hold on to its glorious and valuable past. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community and from throughout our country who are serving on foreign soils in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them as they go about their vital missions. Also tonight, we ask for guidance and direction and compassion and understanding by the members of the city council as they go forth and make the decisions that are on the agenda before us. We just ask for guidance and understanding that we do the right thing for both Batavia today and in the future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Rosado, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, could please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien. Callahan. Meitzler.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that we have 12 of the 14 elected members of the city council present and counted for this evening's meeting, so we obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman, Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services. Do you have anything?
No, I have nothing this evening.
Anybody else? Okay, moving to item number five, items to, or no, it's four. We're going to do Oaths of Office, and these are kind of all lumped together, so we've had a discussion, and the first thing we need to do here is I need to ask Chief Dykey to come forward and tell us a little bit about the three individuals that we are about to be asked to confirm for appointment to the paid-on-call Fire Department.
We have three new individuals to appoint to be a paid-on-call in our department. The first one, well, actually, if they could all come forward, all three of them, Kimberly Albright, Kevin Billenstein, and Reyno Mariotti. Kimberly is a firefighter, too, and a paramedic. She has an associate's degree from the College of DuPage, and she works full-time for Paramedic Services of Illinois and part-time for Advocate Sherman Hospital. Kevin, Kevin, if you'll raise your hand so they know which one you are. There you go. Kevin lives in Aurora. He's a basic operations firefighter, paramedic. He has an associate's degree from Kaplan University and from Ovanci. He works part-time at Aurora Township Fire Department and for the High School Association, and he is also a contract medic for Rosemont. And then Reyno lives in St. Charles. He's a basic operations firefighter, paramedic. He has served in the Marine Corps from 2004 to 2008 and from 2012 to 2015. He has an associate's degree from Elgin Community College and works full-time for the Schaumburg Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief. I ask for a motion of approval for my appointment of these three individuals to the paid-on-call Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Chanset, for the approval of the appointments. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Here.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Motions approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, if I could ask the three of you if you'd come up here in the corner of the center of the room so we can get you on TV. If you would raise your right hands, raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name. Having been appointed to the position of paid-on-call recruit with the Batavia Fire Department in the city of Batavia, in the counties of Kane and DuPage, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of paid-on-call recruit with the Batavia Fire Department to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Welcome. Okay, the next thing we want to do is have a swearing in of the new deputy chiefs. We want to introduce the new deputy chief.
I do. We have a, we will be swearing in a new deputy fire chief. He has a lot of experience here in the tri-cities, and I'll go over it real quickly here. For the last six years, he has been the assistant chief in the Elburn Fire Department. Prior to that, he came from the St. Charles Fire Department, where he was there for 22 years, and held various titles through those years, such as EMS coordinator, fire marshal, director of emergency management, fire inspector, training officer, and eventually, when he left there, he was the battalion chief. Prior to that, he was on the Geneva Fire Department for seven years, where he rose through the department and left there as a shift commander. He holds numerous certifications, including chief fire officer, firefighter III, paramedic instructor III, and health and safety officer. Craig Hanson has worked for, on many specialty teams, such as water rescue, MABUS 13 hazardous materials team, Kane County Fire Investigation Task Force, and MABUS 13 technical rescue team. Craig has a master's degree in business from Benedictine University, bachelor's degree in industrial safety from the Northern Illinois University, an associate's degree in applied science, in fire science, and another associate's degree in EMS management. I am confident that with all of his experience and all of his education, he'll do a fine job for the Batavia Fire Department.
I guess I ask for another motion confirming my appointment of Craig Hanson to be the deputy fire chief.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Chanset. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Motions approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent. Chief, if you'd come forward. Community Batavia, welcome. You and I have known each other for a long time, going back to your Geneva days, so...
Don't be dated.
So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your name.
I, Kirk Hanson.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of deputy chief.
Position of deputy chief.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
City of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of deputy chief.
Of the position of deputy chief.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome. Okay, now I'm going to ask Police Chief Daniel if he would come forward for introduction of our soon-to-be-approved new sergeant. So, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Vince de Blasio has been selected by the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to fill the vacancy within the sergeant's rank created by the appointment of Sergeant, correction, Sean Mazza, to the rank of deputy police chief. Sergeant de Blasio's promotion was effective on June 9, 2017. Vince joined the department in 1994, and he served in a variety of roles during his tenure with the department, including patrol officer, field training officer, patrol officer in charge, and detective. He's been one of the department's defensive tactics instructors, and he's currently a senior range instructor in the department's marksmanship unit, qualified to teach both rifle and pistol tactics. He has earned a designation as a range master from the Police Training Institute in Urbana-Champaign, and he has also attained the recognition as a master patrol officer with the Batavia Police Department. Vince has received numerous letters of commendation and declarations throughout his career. Most notably, in 1999, Vince was the recipient of the Robert A. Popick Batavia Police Officer of the Year Award, the Lewis Bueller Kane County Officer of the Year Award, and the Illinois State Medal of Valor for his actions taken during an incident that involved the shooting of a Batavia police officer during the service of an arrest warrant that year. Vince is originally from the state of Pennsylvania. He's an avid Steelers fan, and he's a graduate, he's a graduate of Southern Illinois University, where, as you'll see when he comes up here, he earned a varsity letter playing football.
Okay, Sergeant, if you could come. Can I put you in the same spot, and you're right there, you're behind her. Thank you. And you want to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Vincent de Blasio, Jr.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of sergeant.
The position of sergeant.
On June 9, 2017.
On June 9, 2017.
With the Batavia Police Department.
Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duty.
Of police sergeant.
Of police sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right, we're going to get away from public safety for just a minute while we take care of some other minor business. We have item six, which is the consent agenda. Alderman Atack, would you present that, please?
Yes, the consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file committee of the whole minutes for April 25, May 2, May 9, and May 23, 2017. Historic preservation commission minutes for May 8 and May 22, 2017. Plan commission minutes for April 19, 2017. April financial report, May 2017, building report. Approvals, June 6, 2017, payroll in the amount of $784,468.79. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,024,512.83. City council minutes for April 17 and June 5, 2017. Resolution 17-77-R, appoint FOIA officers. Approval of the Class F liquor license for Water Street Studios musical performance on July 7, 2017, and approval of the Class C-1 liquor license for the Thai Village Restaurant at 4 North Batavia Avenue. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Rosado, for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Motions approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anything tonight? All right, moving then to item number eight, which is the presentation by the Batavia Chamber. Holly.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to be here this evening. That is, quite frankly, the safest I have ever felt in my entire life. Man, if anything was to go down, that was the time to make it happen, so awesome to have such great servants for our community. I have a few items to share with you, and I also have a member of the chamber to present to you this evening. Tomorrow, we are doing a ribbon cutting at 11:00 a.m. at the market at Gaetano's, so please join us so you can see all the great new fare that they have to offer in the lower level, and you can also bring it up and eat in their dining room in their outside patio. Wednesday at 5:00 p.m., we're also going to do a ribbon cutting to, a ceremonial ribbon cutting to kick off the expansion fundraising project for the Depot Museum, so please come and show your support for that project. And this Friday is the Chamber golf outing at Mill Creek this year with a 1 o'clock shotgun start. Please join us. You still have a few foursomes open, but we have more golfers this year than we have in the last few years, so we're pretty excited about it. Lots of great fun and new things that we're going to be offering out on the course as well, so please join us if you can. In addition to that, this Saturday, I will be at the farmer's market pre-selling the Batavia Appley games. We're very excited. They're $25 apiece. They're being designed right now, well, at least earlier today, by Lighthouse Marketing, and we're very excited for the outcome of the design and how we're going to be distributing that out into the community later this fall. But we are doing pre-sales, so come and visit me at the farmer's market. We'll have a little tent, and we have mock-up of the board as well for everybody to see it. We do not have the little custom pieces. We have the little custom pewter pieces that we have sold throughout the community. We're super excited to have one lighthouse for Lighthouse Marketing. We have a, let's see, what else do we have? We have a bulldog from the school district. We have a mayor Shelkey. I have already called that one, though. If I ever play, I'm going to be Mayor Shelkey. We also have, he's very excited about it. Can you tell? We just have to decide if he's going to hold the key to the city or if he's going to hold his ribbon-cutting scissors, because as you heard earlier, we do lots of those. But we're really excited about it. We also have, you can be Bruce the Spruce from the Park District. You can be Wilson Hall from Fermilab. So we have really great, cute, custom pewter pieces to play with as well. So we're really excited about it. Again, $25 apiece, and we're doing pre-sales this weekend at the farmer's market, so come and check it out. Next, without further ado, we have some new members to the chamber but not new to our community. We have Jim and Cindy Cannella from Orange Home Services here to talk to you a little bit about what they have to offer for you and how you can get in touch with them. So, Jim and Cindy.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jim Cannella, owner of Orange Home Services here in Batavia on Wilson Street. We've been in business seven years. This is our seventh year. We joined the chamber this year, which is really good for us. We've really enjoyed it, and yeah, we're a heating and air conditioning company. We do residential, light commercial, heating and air conditioning. We are, one of the key points in our business, I think, is we have not hired anyone from the industry. Everybody's been from outside the industry, trained in-house, sent to school, and it just, it's really hard to get people to be in the heating and air conditioning field, any of the trades these days. It's very difficult. So we've had kids that have graduated college and come back, and now they do heating and air conditioning for us. So Jim, Cindy, Orange Home Services, Heating and Air Conditioning, thanks for having us.
Can you, can you give us your phone number and work people?
Phone number is 630-761-3343.
And can people stop in your office and see if they want, or?
Yeah, there's, you know.
Give us the address for that.
We have our 12 West Wilson address, and then we're on Midan in Batavia as well. So we have two locations. Or, I'm sorry, Elburn, I'm sorry.
We're trying to get, you're on TV here, so there's people out there watching.
Thank you.
I just want to get your information out so somebody will...
Thank you. And its website is orangehomeservices.com.
All right, well, very good. Well, many years of business success to you, and thank you for becoming a Batavia business and holding your own so well.
So thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to ask, moving to item number eight or nine, which is a proclamation for Alice Gustafson School staff members. I'm going to ask Chief Dykey if he would come up and tell the story here.
We have a proclamation to give out tonight for, in recognition of a life that was saved on May 11 over at Alice Gustafson School, and it involved the staff there, it involved, you know, our paramedics and firefighters that arrived there, but together, we were able to save the life of a teacher over there, and she ended up coming out of the hospital six days later. So let me read it to you real quickly so that I don't miss anything. On May 11, the art teacher at Alice Gustafson School collapsed outside the building. Nicole Woodruff, the fifth-grade teacher, saw her go down and helped position her in the ground to keep her airway open. Lark Kernach, another fifth-grade teacher, called 911 and flagged down the fire marshal, Brian Di Nicola, who was picking up his child at the time. Both Brian and Lynn Maruko, the school nurse, requested an AED from the school and began CPR. Mary Johnson, the music teacher, helped assist with ventilations, and both Brianna Leeford and Carolyn Hetzel retrieved the AED and helped provide medical information, including the fact that the patient was eight weeks pregnant at the time. The paramedics and the fire personnel arrived, and the patient was shocked one time. The pulse came back, and the patient attempted to breathe on their own. She was accompanied to the hospital by Kendra Regus, the P.A. teacher, and Mike Park. A follow-up two weeks later found that she was released from the hospital six days later. Due to the quick action of the staff of the school and the work of the first responders, a life was truly saved that day. The early recognition and prompt CPR and training of the staff all led to a positive income, a positive outcome. It's a very firm reason that we teach CPR at the Fire Department and why we try to enforce it within the community. Truly bystander CPR is what saved her that day. Without bystander CPR, if it would have taken us five minutes to get there, that five minutes, she might not have survived. So it was really a good save on that part that day. So we commend the staff of the school through this proclamation. So we do have a member, several members of the school staff.
Do you have that? Did you, you were...
Yeah, and actually, we have a video from the patient that wanted to say thank you to everybody that did it.
Hi, I'm Laura Starzak. I wanted to take a minute to thank the people that saved my life. I know that I wouldn't be sitting here today without the few of you that worked on me and helped bring me back and save me, and in the quickness that you moved and in your knowledge and in your willingness to do what was needed is the only reason I'm sitting here today, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. My family thanks you, and I don't know what else to say. I can't ever repay, you know, the kindness and the service that you did to me, but I wanted you to know from the bottom of my heart, I'm grateful, and thank you.
So like I said, we have several of the staff in the school here, and we also have the shift that responded out there that day. Now, about 11 of them were on duty that day, and normally, we don't have 11 people go to a, to an ambulance call, but it just so happened on that day that while this was all happening, somebody pulled the fire alarm over there. She walked out with her kids and then collapsed in the yard. So we were already en route with all of our, with our engines, our ladder truck, and everything else of that. So we had 11 people probably about three minutes away by the time she collapsed. So it was like, you know, somebody was looking down on her that day, so.
So one of the things we'd like to do here tonight, because this is such a wondrous and compelling story about life in Batavia from a very good perspective, we've prepared a proclamation I have framed here that we'd like to pass that specifically commends everybody that was at the school that day, and hopefully, Gustafson School can find someplace in their walls down there to hang the proclamation up. But if, I would like to ask Alderman Atack if she would read the proclamation, and then we'll take a vote on it, and then, if possible, I'd like to ask all those who were named, if you're here, if you'd come up, and let us just applaud you, and let me shake your hand, and we can have a picture taken with the proclamation.
Whereas Nicole Woodruff is a fifth-grade teacher at Alice Gustafson School in Batavia, and on May 11, 2017, Nicole saw an art teacher at the school collapse the ground outside the building, and Nicole reacted by helping to position her fellow teacher on the ground to keep her airway open. And whereas Lark Kernach, another fifth-grade teacher, called 911 immediately and also flagged down fire marshal Bryna, Brian Di Nicola, who was picking up his child at the time. And whereas both Brian and Lynn Maruko, the school nurse, called for the AED device from the school, and Brianna Leeford and Carolyn Hetzel retrieved the AED and helped provide medical information, and the team of Brian and Lynn began CPR immediately, as the school music teacher, Mary Jensen, assisted with ventilation. And whereas the patient herself was eight weeks pregnant and the CPR treatment continued as paramedics and fighter personnel arrived, and a single shock was applied using AED, the AED unit, when a pulse came back and the patient attempted to breathe on her own. She was accompanied to the hospital by Kendra Regus and the physical education teacher, Mike Park, and was hospitalized for six days to recuperate and was released from the hospital. Whereas due to the quick action of the staff at Alice Gustafson School and the work of the first responders, a life was truly saved that day. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by Mayor Jeffrey D. Shelkey of the city of Batavia and by Fire Chief Randy Dykey of the Batavia Fire Department that such attention to fellow human beings when confronted with a medical emergency exemplifies the qualities that characterize a genuine lifesaver, and the city of Batavia commends all involved for their presence of mind, informed action, and compassionate care for a fellow human being in crisis. In witness thereof, I hereunto, hereunto, set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Batavia to be affixed on this 19th day of June 2017. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor.
Do you entertain a motion for the approval of the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
So the motion's approved by a vote of 12 yes, no-nos, two absent, and I know we've got some of the folks that are here in vows, and Stark is the only one I recognize. Everybody that's about, come up, and maybe we can also, if we got the shift concerned from here, a bunch of you guys come up, too. We'd just like to get a good picture taken here of this. Don't be shy, we're just going to put you on TV for this. [laughter] [inaudible][1773.12] Come on up, come on up. Right here. Thank you. Thank you. Maybe get the firemen maybe in the back. Brian, why don't you get up here in the truck? You're really one of the first responders. Really, on behalf of the community, I say to each and every one of you, thank you for the wondrous job that you did here. This really is what our town is really all about and the fact that all of you would go readily right to the occasion and help out somebody who is desperately in need. It takes wonders about what a great place we live in and what a great school Gustafson School is. So, thank you to each and every one of you for all of it. It really is a proud time for you to be here. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you so much for recognizing all of us, but I think I speak for everyone. We feel like the real hero is Mr. Nicola. And we would like to ask, I have something here for you, and we'd like to see if you can come to an assembly at our school in August 18th. It's on the paper, so you don't have to remember. And we'd like to recognize you at our school with the entire staff and students. Thank you so much.
Anybody else want us? Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, moving to item number 10, which is a presentation by Robert Pfister, Illinois Municipal Marketing Manager Midwest Region for Advanced Disposal. See here. All right, we'll go then to a, is he here? If not, we'll go to item number 11, which is a presentation by the Batavia Depot Museum and Historical Society. And Dan, you're on the agenda, so you're the one that gets named to talk, or you can let anybody else talk you want.
Just take a moment to get our video wired up here.
Top act.
There's it, Gary. There it is. Okay.
All righty.
Yep.
Good evening, I'm Dan O'Fler, I'm part of the committee that is working to bring about the expansion to the depot committee, which we tonight are members of that group, including Gary King from the Historic Society Board, Tony Winter, who put together our PowerPoint, Ron Link, Jennifer Putzier, our museum director, Joe Diego, who's on the committee, our president, Bob Peterson, John Dillon, and our curator, Chris Winter. We had the opportunity to meet most of them two weeks ago when you had the opportunity to visit our museum and begin to see the site and what we intend to do. We're going to show you our promotional video that we put together. We've been showing that around town and in the community so that people begin to see what it is exactly that we're doing and how important the history is to this community. And then, we have a PowerPoint presentation. And then, Mr. Ron Link, who's part of our committee, will be here to answer any questions that you might have, or myself, or President Peterson. So, you want me, you want to hit this?
I never touch the stuff.
Yeah, well, neither do I, but hopefully this won't.
Okay, no audio.
Abundance of natural resources available. Batavia began as a thriving industrial town, manufacturing flour, ice, lumber, paper, and stone. Batavia was not only a supplier for the Chicago market, it was instrumental in the expansion west. In 1959, life was simpler in Batavia. The entire town would show up at community events.
We played in the river, we swam in the river, we canoed in the river, we ice skated. I mean, the town was us.
On November 17th of 1959, 22 men and women met to discuss the preservation of Batavia's history. The following year, the Batavia Historical Society held its first meeting. 11-year-old Jeff Shelkey was one of the society's first charter members.
I had a great aunt by the name of Irma Jeffrey, and she was always sharing with me her historical anecdotes. And because I showed some meaning or interest to it, she decided that she was going to buy me a membership in the Batavia Historical Society. There's a lot of other towns would form historical society, but that in the case of Batavia, we probably had a far more enriched history than most other towns surrounding us and that this needed to be captured. When the idea was put on the street, it caught its own imagination. And there were a lot of people who rose to the occasion and said, you know, my grandfather or I own part of the windmill factory and, you know, I'm willing to put some money into this and organize it.
People donated so many wonderful things and I think it makes people feel good. Somebody's taking care of that for us.
The Historical Society began looking for a building that could be used as a museum. In 1963, Ruth Johnson, the Batavia reporter for the Aurora Beacon News, learned that the abandoned Chicago Burlington and Quincy Passenger Depot on South Van Buren was going up for sale.
We were about to lose it. It was going to go to Aurora and be part of Blackberry Farm. They got a bunch of the businessmen in town, I believe, to each donate $50 apiece. They raised the $2,000 and so they saved the building. And that was a master stroke.
The museum became a cooperative effort between the Park District and the Historical Society. On October 12th, 1973, the depot was moved to its present home on Houston Street.
It was just like a great carnival for the whole community because the school's children were let out.
Never forget Fred Schrader from the city electric department, who was the foreman of the crew. He personally climbed up and got on the top of the roof of the building and just straddled the whole thing through the entire ride.
He was riding on the roof with a pole, raising the wires. He was our fiddler on the roof.
Over half of the people in town contributed to the project either through monetary donations or through the donation of goods and services. The Furnace Foundation made a major contribution to the effort by matching donations.
After I watched the building being moved and I was getting involved in the community, I volunteered to help with some of the painting on the inside.
Two years later, the Depot Museum officially opened. The Depot Museum is a shining example of how Batavians made a commitment to preserving the past for future generations. Today, the Depot Museum is the cornerstone of the Riverwalk, providing the footprint that shows who we are as a community. Our rich and vibrant history echoes throughout the building, showing residents and visitors historic artifacts. The Depot Museum welcomes over 4,000 visitors each year, as well as 400 third graders from Batavia Public Schools who have the unique opportunity to study Batavia history and report about it.
We spend about a month, month and a half researching Batavia, putting it together in a cute little binder for them.
I like doing it, it was fun. I like to, like to learn about the Batavia's history.
I don't know much about Batavia, so it's nice that there are museums like this to teach me about it.
The report definitely sparks their interest and sparks their love and curiosity for Batavia.
The Batavia Historical Society is committed to preserving the past for our future generations and we need your help.
I think it's important for a community to protect its history and to collect the history. That's the mission of the museum.
Every city needs to keep a record of their history for people like Kristen, and she needs to know what happened before. And then, her children need to know what happened afterwards.
There's been so much growth and so many changes and the depot can preserve those things, and we do, but there's just not room for everything we want to hit, we want to display.
We have so many wonderful exhibits upstairs, but we need more space to house more exhibits.
The need for additional space is critical. Currently, donated materials and artifacts are being stored off-site. And since exhibition space is limited, Batavia is unable to showcase many traveling exhibits provided by major museums across the country.
This addition is way overdue because there's been so much new material added, so many new things have happened.
There's so many things that we have. With a large exhibit hall, it just could get, open up so many opportunities.
Plans for an addition are already in the works. The land located to the north of the Depot Museum has been acquired. And the Batavia Park District has allocated funds for site development. The new addition will include a lobby, reception area, gift shop, special exhibition space, and restrooms on the main floor with elevator access to the lower level. The lower level will provide a curatorial workroom, collection storage, offices, and other amenities. The expansion will also include a welcome center to showcase all that Batavia has to offer. Our dedicated volunteers will look to raise funds, labor, or products in kind through corporate gifts, grants from foundations, and donations from local businesses and civic organizations.
Batavia's always had an amazing sense of history. They have a sense that the world, history is bigger than just ourselves individually. That accumulated knowledge and history is valuable long after we're gone. So, thankfully, there's people that see that.
I think that's one of the true treasures of Batavia is this kind of inherited appreciation for the love of the town. And there's a lot of things that are accomplished because people do have an ownership here of honor and love for what the town's all been about.
We've seen so much go on in Batavia, things that we need to keep for the younger people and the people that have moved in here that didn't grow up in Batavia. Because there's so much history, there's so many wonderful stories about Batavia.
I would love to have people donate to this project. Very important for us to think about the future.
Can we count on you? Donate today and be a part of Batavia history.
I want to, I want to thank everyone in the council for the time watching this and also for the time I'm about to spend to just talk a little bit more about the expansion project itself and maybe talk a little bit more about some of the details of the project. I also want to thank Bothan Productions, a local production company, for putting that video together for us. So, anyway, you, a lot of you took a tour of the museum a couple of weeks back and we appreciate you doing that. So, some of what I'm going to talk about, you may have already seen, but I do want to kind of set the stage for talking just in a little bit more detail about what this expansion project means to the City of Batavia. Couple of things I'd like you to keep in mind. On the video, it was stated that there are 4,000 visitors a year that come to the museum and that's an incredible number. What the video doesn't say is 65 or 66% of those visitors are not Batavia residents. I mean, just think about that. 26 to 2,700 people a year come through that museum who don't live here. What an incredible opportunity to teach them about the, what, you know, how to live and work and play and shop and all of that in Batavia. So, keep that in mind as I go through this short little presentation and just talk about the campus and a little bit of the history of it and more importantly, where we're going with the project. Up on the screen, you see just a couple of photos. I want to talk a little bit about the outfitting buildings. If you were there a couple of weeks ago, you saw these. But the Coffin Bank, the first bank in Batavia, and the Smith Gazebo, the Guns and Housen Smith Gazebo, both added to the campus in 1990. In 1995, the US Wind and Engine, US Wind Engine and Pump Water Tower was placed on the campus. And then, in 2000, the Gustafson Research Center was added to the campus. That was funded through a series of, a combination of grants and funding from the Batavia Historical Society and Batavia Park District. And a real cool thing that says a lot about the City of Batavia is when it came time to furnish the research center, it was the citizens of Batavia who bought the furnishings and the accessories. So, let's go inside. If you were at the museum a couple of weeks ago, you know that when you go inside, there's a rotating exhibit room. And the current exhibit is a Century of Batavia Business, 1870 through 1970. And you're right, it kind of highlights some of the Batavia businesses over that period of 100 years. Some names you recognize, maybe some you won't. There's a little bit of information about the Capitol Theater, which is today the home of the Kluber Architects and Engineers on that building over on Shumway. There's information about the local groceries like Anderson and Shelkey and even the Juul that used to be in the spot that the Walgreens used to be in. There's the Geese, I think it's Geese, maybe Geis, cigar manufacturing company, which was on the second floor in the building that now houses the Pure Imagination Group and a whole bunch of other companies. That is just an incredible amount of information. Ben Franklin, where Panera Bread is currently. So, worth going in and spending some time and learning some things about some of the companies that were in business during the period of 1870 through 1970. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about trains in Batavia because, you know, the museum's in a depot, so what more can you say? Except, obviously, we have a pretty, pretty strong railroading history. And we have a permanent exhibit about railroading in Batavia. And you've probably heard everything you could possibly want to know about railroads and trains and how they impact the Batavia, but I'm going to tell you one thing that maybe you don't know. During, from the period of 1860 to 1881, the station master was named Thomas Cleveland and he was a cousin of President Grover Cleveland. And that's not Thomas in the window, it's just a facsimile of him. But for those 21 years, he was a, the cousin of the president was our station master. More on trains, the third grade class going through the caboose and then in the back, you see some of them going through the coffin bank. 400 students, in fact, north of 400 students pass through the museum every year as part of a cooperative program between the Batavia Public Schools and the Depot Museum during their segment on local history. They spend time at the museum, they learn more about Batavia history, and just about every third grade student comes through there. I know my children went through when they were in third grade. I imagine some of yours did also, maybe some of your grandchildren have or will. Over on the right, we see a student learning about communicating in the days before smartphones. He's sending a telegraph to one of his classmates who's located on the other side of the exhibit. The last two rooms on the first floor, the Mary Todd Lincoln Room and the Van Nordrick Room. We all know Mary Todd spent time in Batavia at the Bellevue Sanitarium after she was declared insane. We have her furniture, or some of her furniture anyway. So, that is in fact, the bed she slept in. And in the Van Nordrick Room, that is artifacts and furnishings from the Van Nordrick estate. If you take a tour of the museum and you go into that room, ask the docent to fire up that music box. Because even if you've heard of music box before, I guarantee you, you have never heard one like that. If we go downstairs into the lower level, there's a chronicle of Batavia history from the earliest days all the way through the period of the windmill manufacturers and a little bit after. I can't fit all the photos on this and we don't have time to go through it all, but you can get a pretty solid chronology of the history of Batavia all the way up through some of the modern 20th century businesses that were in town. And then, as I said, the Gustafson Research Center was added in 2000. That middle photo is a photo from the dedication of the research center. And then, starting in the upper left and going clockwise, we have some researchers, volunteers doing research in the center. We have a permanent furnace electric exhibit there and they really deserve that. The Furnace Electric Company and then subsequently, the Furnace Foundation has been a strong supporter of the museum since day one. And then, we also have hard copy of a lot of the, a lot of the research documents that are currently being digitized and that's what that last photo is. And now, to talk a little bit about what our expansion plans are and what impact they could have on the museum and the community. I want to state, by the way, that whatever happens at this museum, we are all going out of our way to make sure that the integrity of the depot is maintained. It is the oldest standing CB&amp;Q depot in the United States. We don't want to mess with that and we certainly want to maintain its current status on the National Register of Historic Places. You saw this on the screen, on the video. We took the expansion area and outlined it, outlined it in red. So, it's going to take up a lot more space. Actually, we're adding about 5,000 square feet. The museum is currently 3,500 square feet, so it's a sizable expansion. In order to make room for that expansion, we need to move a couple of things. The X marks the spot where the caboose currently resides and it's going to move out to the west side of the path. We already have the land to the west of the bike path. Same thing with the water tower. The coffin bank will The Coffin Bank will be moving north from its current location because else, otherwise, it would be right in the center of the gift shop. Don't want that. There's a special exhibit, exhibition hall right there. It's a significant part of the expansion project. And what that's going to allow us to do is that's going to allow us to host traveling exhibits from major national museums, like the Field Museum or the Smithsonian Institute. Think about those 4,000 visitors that come through the museum every year. And think about 65% of them not being from Batavia. How cool will it be to attract people into Batavia? Because they can come here to see an exhibit from the Smithsonian. That's the Welcome to Batavia Center in that area there. That's where we'll be able to tell these visitors what it's like to live and dine and shop and play and, and work in Batavia. And we're adding an elevator. Right now, the museum is ADA compliant, but it is not really convenient. You can visit both floors, but you have to exit the building and come around from the other side to enter at the lower level. The elevator will eliminate that need. And then, quickly, the bottom, the lower level. Again, outlined in red. We see the collection stored space. And as the video stated, much of the collection is currently stored off-site. Adding this stored space will allow the, the majority of the historical society's collection to be stored right in the museum. Some of the things that can't be stored, larger wagons, farm equipment, that type of thing just won't fit. But the majority is, is going to be there. And that's important because right next to that collection stored space is a new curatorial workspace. Right now, the space is on the second floor. It's a small room. And with the collection spread out in multiple locations, quite a chore to put an exhibit together. So having the collection right next door, just walking over into the next room, it's going to be a real impact on productivity. And then finally, a classroom. The museum, for a long time, has wanted to add an additional agenda or additional schedule of educational programs and hasn't had the space. And with this expansion, we are going to be adding a classroom. And then we will be, be able to increase the number of educational offerings that we will have. So I want to thank you for taking some time and going through this. Thank you for your past support and for your continued support of the museum. And I'll just turn it back over to Dan to, I'm sorry, I'm going to turn it over to Ron to close it out. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. Again, thank you for this evening, the opportunity to come and tell you a little bit about the, the museum. And we also want to thank our partners, the Batavia Park District. Without their help and support, this wouldn't be possible. So again, we'll be around for any questions. Members will stay around. Again, thank you this evening. Feel free to ask us any questions or we're looking, again, appreciate your support and the ability to come down this evening and take a little bit of your time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. I mean, I, I think it goes without saying that certainly the Depot Museum has been and continues to be. And I think in the future, will be a stronger and vital link to what this town is all about as far as where we've been and where we want to go. And I really hope we are very quickly in, in success in raising the necessary funds to put this together and get it going. Because I think this will be something that future generations of our community will be very appreciative that this was done. So thanks to all those involved in this movement. And hopefully, you're going to pick up a rapid pace and we'll get some money raised and be in business here in the short term. We certainly want to encourage our residents. If you can find a few dollars in your pocket, send it the way of the Depot Museum because they certainly have a vital and very welcome cause that should be supported by the community. So thanks again for coming down. Okay, moving to...
I have a question. Maybe somebody could answer. If, if somebody would like to donate and/or get involved with the Batavia Historical Museum, how can they do that?
On our newly redesigned webpage, go to bataviahistoricalsociety.org. And there are numerous places that you can click on. And there's a big button that says Donate. Please click on that button, Alderman Brown, and we'll be sending you a thank you.
All righty, thank you.
And there are also places where you can volunteer with the different activities that we are planning with. One of the things that I want to mention is the plans that you saw were conceptual plans. We're now in the process of developing the schematic, is that the right word? The schematic designs. One of the things that we found out as we reached out to some of our, our partners in this, the Batavia School System, the Chamber, Main Street, they were more, they were interested in seeing, well, what's the inside? Or what will it look like? What will a welcome center look like? And we've spoken with the city staff, with the city manager, and the directors of the agencies that I just mentioned. And we're going to be sitting down, once we have these schematic designs, and fine tune them so that this will be an opportunity for everybody in the community, especially in the business community, the civic organizations, to help design what this welcome center may possibly look like. And we're very fortunate that we have some great partners in this endeavor. Very good. Anybody else? Thanks, guys, for coming down. Thank you very much. Okay, the next thing, another presentation. We have Mr. Chris Easton here to give us the City of Batavia video.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This actually worked out kind of cool. It's a neat segue. We just heard about the history of Batavia. The video we'll be showing you now is a promotional video about Batavia now and more importantly, in the future. I have with me tonight Joe Hill, who's president and CEO of a company called Global Aerial Video. By way of background, last fall, Laura and I met with Joe and spent quite a bit of time talking about what we can do to produce a video that will help market the city. And when we sent emails or sent out, you know, files as opposed to sending out regular slow mail or regular emails with simply graphs, we thought if we could have a video and also add, add it to our website, it will give people a real quick kind of idea of what this town is about. So it is a business recruiting tool. And we produced two, two videos, Joe, Joe did. Shot primarily from either street level, which is standing, or above-street level, in many cases, either still photos or video from a drone. So one that you'll see is about four and a half minutes long. It's more general focused, talks about the community generally. The other one, which is a version of about two and a half minutes, is actually more economic development, business recruitment focused. Now, this is all under the presumption this is going to work. The logistics are, the logistics are a little difficult. We have a fallback in case his system meets a firewall. And that's to go to Vimeo, which is a link. But we hope we can get it actually done this way. We didn't expect to have the, like I said, the good news is you just saw a video. So the segue's there. The awkward news is it kind of changed the scope of how this will be set up.
As a community, we have a lot to offer.
We are an exciting place to live. It's an exciting place to locate your business and that exciting things are happening here in Batavia.
I enjoy the fact that Batavia has such community pride. You just need to come to Batavia to see that community pride, what it really looks like.
We have a number of things that are happening in the community right now. I would describe it as kind of a redeveloping downtown. Our downtown was originally built along the banks of the Fox River. And now we are looking at potentially adding a major residential component in the form of either apartments or condominium housing in the proximity to the downtown area.
It's a nice little quaint downtown. We love the area. And of course, this is a perfect place for the farmer's market.
It's by far the best market we've been to in the local area.
It's a fun place to just hang out.
This is the nicest community on the planet.
They're turning it around into a real artisan town.
Water Street Studios is a nonprofit community art center. We have a gallery space for our community to come and experience the art that we offer here. And we make the art accessible to our community here in Batavia, but also in the Fox Valley area and beyond.
The Batavia Fine Arts Center, a staple within Batavia and the surrounding area, bringing people from all over into Batavia to see these high-quality performances.
Batavia has been the US headquarters for Aldi for almost 35 years. And the city has been very open and abrasive of our way of business, our way of being a simple, smart grocery store.
Batavia businesses are like a big family here.
The demographics are perfect for Funway because of all the families that live in Batavia. Just a sense of community is really what Funway's all about, which is what Batavia is all about as well.
We have a very large commercial area on the far west side of our community, which encompasses around 5 million square feet of business space. Most of the major retailers in the US market are found along the Randall Road corridor. We have a very large industrial park over 1,300 acres, including a recent addition by Suncast Corporation of well in excess of 300,000 square feet. Certainly enjoy, you know, the current situation that exists in Batavia as it revolves around economic development. The recent announcement by the Fermi National Accelerator Laboratory that they're looking to do a major investment, well, in excess of a billion dollars over the next few years to bring in some new facilities and some new experiments on the lab, which will generate a lot of new jobs and a lot of sheer excitement for the region.
It's such a great location. You can get in and out of the city very quickly.
We are due west of downtown Chicago. We have two metro lines that are very easy for our residents to get to.
Not to mention the river running straight through the center and heart of our downtown. On either side of the river, there are beautiful walking, running, biking paths for people to use.
The Batavia community has great people.
I know it's a good place to risk kids, family, and business.
The number one reason that people move to Batavia is for the schools. That's what we hear over and over again, and that makes us proud.
We have a variety of different types of housing here. It's one of the things that creates a very diverse community.
There's just a lot of community support, and it's vibrant, and you can feel it.
And everybody looks upon that kind of lifestyle as kind of a badge of honor that Batavia wears proudly.
Is that the second one?
No.
Repeating that for a second. Okay. Thanks, Joe. Again, real quickly, that was the longer version, which is more community-focused as opposed to the next one you'll see. You'll see some duplication, actually the same footage. But this one is more focused towards the recruiting for commercial industrial development. One other point I wanted to make was, there was a delay in presenting this. It was almost kind of this fortuitous that this thing came tonight with the Historical Society. Because I do like the segue, the way, hey, this is what we were all about. Let's try to maintain that. This is what we are becoming, and let's build on that. So the timing is great. But we were trying to show this like the last two months. Because there's a component that talks about the One Washington Place project, and it hadn't been decided, as you know, there was some delay in that. We didn't want to make it public on that until it was done. So, Quincy, we shot for June 19th, and that's a date, so the Historical Society. So, Ron, way to work it. All right, so Joe, if you want to do the two and a half minute. Also, we don't normally have, when we play the emergency vehicles in the background, but I guess it's better than my voiceover, so that's what we're doing.
We are an exciting place to live. It's an exciting place to locate your business. And exciting things are happening here in Batavia.
As a community, we have a lot to offer. We have a number of things that are happening in the community right now. I would describe it as kind of a redeveloping downtown. We are looking at adding a major residential component in the form of either apartments or condominium housing in the proximity to the downtown area.
It's such a great location. You can get in and out of the city very quickly.
We have two metro lines that are very easy for our residents to get to.
It's a nice little quaint downtown. We love the area.
This is the nicest community on the planet.
Batavia has been the US headquarters for Aldi for almost 35 years. And the city has been very open and abrasive of our way of being a simple, smart grocery store.
Batavia businesses are like a big family here.
We have large corporations and non-for-profits all working together to make Batavia a better place.
The current situation that exists in Batavia as it revolves around economic development. We have a very large commercial area on the far west side of our community, which encompasses around 5 million square feet of business space. Most of the major retailers in the US market are found along the Randall Road corridor. We have a very large industrial park over 1,300 acres, including a recent addition by Suncast Corporation of well in excess of 300,000 square feet. The recent announcement by the Fermi National Accelerator Laboratory that they're looking to do a major investment over the next few years, which will generate a lot of new jobs and a lot of excitement for the region.
The Batavia community has great people.
I know it's a good place to risk kids, family, and business.
The number one reason that people move to Batavia is for the schools. That's what we hear over and over again, and that makes us proud. We serve students in grades pre-K through 12, and we serve about 6,000 students in Batavia.
We have a variety of different types of housing here. It's one of the things that creates a very diverse community.
There's just a lot of community support, and it's vibrant, and you can feel it.
And everybody looks upon that kind of lifestyle as kind of a badge of honor that Batavia wears proudly.
We are an exciting place to live. It's an exciting place.
Well, that concludes those two videos. Again, the purpose is to link these, obviously, with our website, and also to send them out as we try to attract business and get in the minds of the site selection people, both locally, regionally, and nationally, for that matter. So we're happy with the piece. And if you have any questions, happy to answer them. Joe, do you want to say a quick blurb about your company?
Oh, I don't know. I want to talk about the company. Thank you, Mayor, and council members and staff for... The thing I want to say to all of you, we had a great amount of fun and enjoyment and learned a lot in working with the people. The business community here in Batavia was absolutely wonderful. The staff here with the city of Batavia was incredible in helping us put this video together. You have an unbelievable community. I actually live in Naperville, but I, I, I would consider moving back out to Batavia in two seconds. We just had really a wonderful time here. We thank you very much, from my company's standpoint, for the opportunity to work with the city and work with the staff here. Once again, we had a wonderful experience. Chris has been fantastic at times. We've enjoyed every minute of it. And I, and once again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you.
One closing remark is that, one of the things you heard throughout the, the video was community, the word "community." That's not just a blurb. That's not just a schtick. And I think you'll find that when we continue to march on our branding exercise, there's going to be some nice dovetailing on that same thought. People really do believe that this town is predicated on its community and, and the sense of place that people are together with a community-oriented focus, both in their, with friends, with neighbors, but also with business and civic activity. So it's, it's always tough to sell that if it's not true. And selling any brand that's artificial or disingenuous is not going to work. I think this really is our brand, and our people obviously make it very clear on the, on the video. So that makes our job a lot easier. Thank you.
I have one question, and maybe Laura can answer this, or you can answer this. How does this fit in with the branding exercise we're in process with? And how did we get to a video before we're done with the branding exercise?
Well, actually, we had been working on the video prior to initiating the branding exercise. But the nice thing about Joe and his company is that the video is made so it can be somewhat adaptable. And it can be informed by the, the branding. And Joe, do you have a few words to say about that?
Sure, let me address that. It was brought up as we were kind of midway through the project that this was a possibility. I maintain a full staff of editors as part of our project. And we assured everybody that as you go through this rebranding exercise, we can adapt the video and various versions of the video to fit whatever your message needs may be. The important thing is that we are able to accumulate hours and hours of clips and video and interview time. So there's ways for us to very, almost rapid-fire adjust according to your needs.
That's kind of what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Really quick question for you. Went by quick, so I'm not sure if I read it right or not. So you may want to double-check when you mentioned the two train lines. It looked like it said Metro and Union Pacific instead of maybe BNSF and Union Pacific. I'm not, did it, so...
There's, there's an adjustment we have to make. I'm going to blame, that's, that's an easy one for us to take care of. And this is why we wanted to really kind of show it everybody to you because I knew we were going to get a lot of feedback in a lot of different directions. That's an easy correction for us. We'll have that taken care of by tomorrow.
Can we recolor the One North Washington Project?
That was going to be my next thing, is that's the one... That was going to be my next thing, is that's the one thing that jumps out.
I'm staying out of this one.
Seriously, Chris? Hello?
That has to go.
That's actually... No, that actually is the third version, but yeah, there is one more color. We were actually waiting to think we might get one more last version from the developer, but that actually is the third version that's up on the screen that you saw, and it's the latest that went to the appeal process. But yes, we can take that out and change it. And to answer your question, I think he answered it, but just letting you know, we caught that, but the thought was, you know, people from out of the region particularly, they're going to hear two metro lines, two commuter lines, and they're not really going to know that, but for accuracy's sake, yes, there's Burlington Northern and Aurora, and there's obviously the UP in Geneva, so we can make that change.
Thank you.
The rendering of the building looks really good. It's the yellow block.
You know, I've never heard that comment before.
No.
I thought the color was never an issue.
Never.
No.
Okay, thank you, guys. Good job.
All right. The next thing, item 13, is the Tree Commission is getting active, and they have two vacancies on the Tree Commission, and so I've had some folks volunteer, one of them being Dr. Robert Birch, who many of you may know was a kind of a legendary teacher in Batavia schools for a number of years. And the other one is Anna Baker, who has quite an extensive background in environmental education and is a secondary science teacher. So, I would ask for their confirmation of appointments. And then also, we need, I think I can do this all in one motion, I think, we need... I'd like to reappoint Robert Lutens, who many of you may know as one of the head people in the landscaping out at Fermi Accelerator, and is quite knowledgeable in trees and plants and whatever. And the other one is Kevin Summers, who is a local resident who has been valuable on the commission. And then Frank Sopp, who is a lifelong Batavia arborist and tree cutter, has volunteered for a number of years at no pay to be the city arborist. And so I'd like to reappoint him as the city arborist in that position with no pay. But he doesn't want any pay. He jokes about that with quite some frequency. So I'd ask for a motion of approval of those five appointments to the Batavia Tree Commission.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and second. Any other discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Was that ATEC that made the motion?
No.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Wolf.
Wolf, and then?
Stark.
Stark seconded.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving to item number 14, which is Resolution 17-75-R, awarding a task order number 12 to Allen Peppa Architects for Government Center Interior Space Planning for an amount not to exceed $97,900. Who's got this one?
I do.
Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is part of the conditions assessment report that was done on the Government Center Building in 2015. That report identified and prioritized a number of life safety and building code issues that we had within this building. This is our current and next step moving forward to work on the interior space planning and rearranging of the interior of this building to suit today's needs. Does anybody have any questions? Move forward. Then I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 17-75-R, awarding Task Order Number 12 to Allen Peppa Architects for the Government Center Interior Space Planning for the amount not to exceed $97,900.
Second? Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the contract with Allen Peppa Architects for the Government Center Interior Planning. Any further discussion on that? I would like to just make a comment. Have no problems with the interior planning of it. I talked earlier today with Laura, and we do have a little bit of a little issue, I would describe it, right outside the door here, we have this large rock. I don't know, have you ever seen it? Stop, there's a... That rock has a plaque on it, and it was found out on the farm of Christopher Payne, who was the first settler in Kane County, out behind what is today Heritage Woods on East Wilson Street. And in 1933, for the city's 100th birthday, the city went out and got that rock and had it brought into East Wilson Street, where it sat out where the Well House is out at Wilson and Delia, just east of Prairie Street, and it sat out there for a number of years. And they put a plaque on it saying that it was commemorating that Batavia had the first settler, and that the stone was set at a location that was in the first plat of Batavia. So that's the key thing that we have to consider here. That plaque out there says it's in the... So, in 1983, for the 150th birthday, the stone really didn't fit out on East Wilson Street anymore because we kept expanding the water plant out there, or the water tank. So we got the idea we would move it down into downtown Batavia and put it right here by the building. So that was done only after we checked and made sure that this island was part of Payne's plat, and it was, so we were cool on it. We stayed within the limits of it. But we did one other thing that's just now probably going to... It doesn't come back to haunt us, but it's something we really got to make sure we're taking care of. In 1983, the Batavia School District got really into this idea of this stone down here, and so they went and they asked every kid in elementary school to write a letter about what the stone meant to them or what it meant to Batavia. And we assembled over 2,000 letters from Batavia Elementary. There were four elementary schools in town at the time. We didn't have the new Gusterson, or Alice Gusterson, or McQuain out on West Main Street. We had the old McQuain, and we had Alice Gusterson on the south, and we had Louise White and J.B. Nelson. Those were the four elementary schools. They all... So the superintendent of schools, Stephanie Marshall at the time, had a special school day in which all the schools walked down here, and then one school at a time, one by one, walked up and presented their stack of letters that each one of their kids had written, and we had created a time capsule. And all 2,000-plus letters were put into that time capsule, and with the idea that the time capsule is going to be reopened in 2033 for the 200th birthday of the city of Batavia. So we're 34 years into the time capsule out here. Well, at some point here in the recent past, somebody came along and we had it... We had the time capsule enclosed and coated with fiberglass, so no water would get in on all these letters. And so we've done everything we can to protect this thing. We put a plaque on the top of it, and just recently, I noticed the plaque is gone. And so I know, I'm sure they didn't get that time capsule, because that baby is in the ground underneath there. But one of the things we got to do is, number one, we got to go back out here and make sure where exactly where the time capsule is, and then if we're going to take out the flower area out here to make more parking, we got to come up with another area to move the stone to, and we got it to keep with the sign on the plaque. It has to be within Christopher Payne's claim to Batavia, which stops about at Water Street. So we got to keep it someplace on the east side of town. So that's the issues that we are... So Laura and I talked today. We're going to go in search of this site where this plaque is out, or where this time capsule is. And interestingly, within the last couple of weeks, I was down here, I think it was two weeks ago Saturday, and a family was out here walking, and the parents were standing here by this stone telling their kids, "Mom and Dad wrote letters that are in the time capsule in the bottom of this..." So there's going to be like 2,000 people in 1933 are going to be looking for their letter, and that was part of the thing that I think I may have said it to them, think about that you're going to be able to come back 50 years from now with your grandchildren and watch your letter being unearthed out of this time capsule. So we really got a community commitment here that I suggest you don't want to walk away from, because there's a lot of people with... Because there was 2,000 kids standing out here one day in September of 1983. So just so we know, we got to make sure that we're preserving the time capsule.
Sounds like a great Eagle Scout project.
Yeah.
For me to move it from that side of the building to that side of the building.
Well, whatever. We'll get the chance to decide where we want to move it to. I don't have any problem with that, but we got to protect that time capsule, because there's a lot of people looking forward to that coming to their life someday. So, that's my talk. We have a motion and second for Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving to item 15, approval of 2018 calendar. Who's got this one?
I do. This is the proposed 2018 City of Batavia City Council Committee and Commission schedule. It includes city council meetings on every... The first and third Wednesday of every month, except when there are Monday holidays, and city council meetings will be on the following Tuesday after the holiday. Committee of the whole meetings are always on Tuesday nights, and then it talks about the commission meetings. Alderman Brown, did you have an opportunity to count the number of meetings?
I did count the number of meetings. Somehow or another, I've been elected to do that over the last however many years, and without including the Police and Fire Commission meetings and the adjudication meetings, there's 142 meetings on our calendar for the next year. So it usually kind of comes in handy when we're in an election year and people are thinking about running for office. I kind of like to try to point out the commitment they need to make, but yet, I'll point it out again tonight, that there's 142 meetings in this coming calendar year that we're all scheduled to be at, or we're not all necessarily supposed to be at every meeting there is, you know, whether it be Plant Commission or Zoning Board of Appeals or something, but they're all certainly meetings that we could attend and participate in.
And as we know, there'll be some special meetings called during the year for this or that, so about 150, it probably would be safe to round that off.
I think you're right.
Well, I am moved that we approve the 2018 City of Batavia Meeting Calendar Schedule. Second?
Moved by Alderman ATEC, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the 2018 Meeting Calendar Schedule. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving to item number 16, Ordinance 17-40, approving and authorizing the acquisition of real property extinguishing the driveway easements benefiting 109 East Wilson Street. Laura, are you talking about this, or...
I could.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. This was our very last obligation for property acquisition associated with the redevelopment agreement between the city and One North Washington LLC. And just as a reminder, and we saw it in the video today, that project will be comprised of 186 one- and two-bedroom luxury apartments, a 350 space public parking garage, and nearly 15,000 square feet of additional commercial space in our downtown area. It's expected to generate more than $700,000 in new tax revenue. The project is located within the newly created Tiff 5, and Article 2.02 of the redevelopment agreement required the city to obtain a release of a couple of easements that existed in the alleyway in the center of the block. We have already completed a contract with the property owners at 8 North River Street, and now this is for the property located at 109 East Wilson Street. With the owner of that property, we were able to negotiate that he would receive a cash payment of $125,000, and he would also be allowed access to a community garbage corral that will be located as part of the public parking garage. And also, the easement, in place of a driveway easement, the owner of this property will still retain a... Be able to use a pedestrian, that as a pedestrian easement, and also place landscaping there as well. And the building owner also wanted use of two parking spaces, but not within the new public parking garage. Instead, those two designated parking places will be in the art stop parking lot, which is located across the street from his building. Although it's not written as an obligation as part of the agreement, the property owner did indicate that he would like to utilize the funds that he is receiving as part of this agreement to make improvements to his property, both to the facade, also to the interior of the property, but also to that, the east-facing wall that will be part of the alley to put in more like storefront windows, which will aesthetically be a really nice addition to that alleyway, and just contacted me last week eager to begin those projects. So it's our recommendation that you approve the Ordinance 17-40, approving and authorizing acquisition of the real property extinguishing the driveway easement benefiting 109 East Wilson Street. Well, I move that we approve Ordinance 17-40, approving and authorizing the acquisition of real property extinguishing the driveway easement benefiting 109 East Wilson Street, Batavia, Illinois. Second?
Moved by Alderman ATEC, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Ordinance 17-40 for the easement. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Salvati?
Aye.
Meitzler?
No.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving to item number 16, Ordinance 17-40, approving and authorizing the acquisition of the real property extinguishing the driveway easement benefiting 109 East Wilson Street.
Well, I move that we approve Ordinance 17-40, approving and authorizing the acquisition of real property extinguishing the driveway easement benefiting 109 East Wilson Street, Batavia, Illinois. Second?
Moved by Alderman ATEC, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Ordinance 17-42 for the easement. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Salvati?
Aye.
Meitzler?
No.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATEC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Salvati?
Aye.
Meitzler?
No.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of Ordinance 17-42, the granting of the variance for OMG's Automotive Warehouse. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll. Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent. All right, moving to 18, which is Resolution 17-06-R, authorizing execution of Task Force Number, Order Number 6 with WBK Engineering LLC for North Dam Signage and Lighting Plan in the amount of $21,000. Who's got this one? Alderman Wolf, you have it?
Yes, that is mine. I just need to open it.
Yeah, John? John?
Yeah.
I think people are here from OMG.
Yes, I'm from OMG.
Do we want to let them say something?
We invited them to.
Okay, yeah, you would like to say, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Thank you, guys. Council. Mayor, everyone, it is Gino Dobleman. I'm from North Aurora, Illinois, and it's OMG Automotive Warehouse. We are going to be located at 1183 Pearson, Unit 113. Basically, internet sales only. You can reach us at 630-454-4186, or our website, www.omgautomatic.com.
You're a quick student.
Thank you. Man, you have no idea what this means to me, guys. So, you know, I live in North Aurora, I've done business, been doing it for 16 years. I came to Batavia because a couple of other friends of mine in the area speak so highly of me, and I can't wait to plant the roots here and expand eventually.
Thank you.
So, thank you, guys, very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Find it?
Yes, I have it here now. This is a contract for $46,000 for parking consultant services for the parking structure that will be included in One Washington Place.
Nope, nope, nope.
One of us.
You're on the dam.
Oh, I opened the wrong one up, I'm sorry. Got them all listed here. WBK.
1706.
There it is, 1706. This is the dam. This will be for signage and lighting on the dam, an amount not to exceed $21,000. Basically, with all our research, we're at the point now where to get an insurance policy, we have to comply with some signage requirements from the insurance company to provide us with a policy. Not that I like it, but that's where we're at on this one.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 1706, approval of Task Order Number 6 with WBK Engineering LLC for signage and lighting plans for the North Batavia Dam for an amount not to exceed $21,100.
Second.
Move by Alderman Wolf, second by somebody, Alderman Meitzler, for approval of Ordinance 1706 for the lighting plan for the dam. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Alderman Brown.
This has been a very controversial resolution that we've seen in front of us now for probably the last six months. There's been a lot of conversation as to whether we own the dam, don't own the dam, who owns the dam, why we need to hire an engineering firm to do this for us, whether or not we even need to do this, whether we own the dam or whether we don't own the dam. I'm not going to support this, and I think everybody knows the reason why, but just so the public knows, I don't believe we own the dam. There's nothing that anybody has found, other than some documentation from 2002, when DNR was in here with a proposal to remove or destroy, or take out the dam, that there was some memo in there that said that, in their opinion, the city of Batavia owned the dam. Staff has done title research on it, and they cannot find any ownership, any documentation acknowledging who owns the dam. I'm afraid that we're going to be digging a very deep hole here that we don't want to dig. I feel as though, when we start getting into this study, what the study is going to tell us, what the insurance company is going to require, I've brought it up at the committee meetings, that, you know, if we're going to insure the dam, why aren't we insuring every portion of the river that the city has ownership in, where we know we have ownership in? I understand staff's recommendation here, I don't agree with it. I just want to be on record stating that I do not believe that we have any ownership in this dam, and I cannot support this. So, for that reason, I won't be supporting it.
Okay, anybody else? Kirk call the roll, then. Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
No.
Euer.
No.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
No.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
So, that one is seven yes.
Nine.
Nine yes, three no, so motions approved. Okay, moving to 19, which is Resolution 17-76-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Carl Walker Incorporated in the amount of $46,000 to provide parking consultant services for One Washington Place parking structure. Who's got this? Alderman Wolf.
Thank you, Your Honor. Now, we're on to the parking garage. This is for consultant services for the parking structure that will be included in Washington Place. It's going to be a two-story parking facility with parking for approximately 350 vehicles. This is, I guess the easiest way to describe this, is this is a contract so that we get the best functionality out of the space that we have approved for the parking garage. I don't think everything has been finalized on exact layouts and everything, or what I'll say would be value engineering, or something that we may determine will work better for the community and for maintenance and everything else that we have to take into account as this is being built. Gary wants to chime in on that or anything, but I think from the standpoint of city ownership of the property on the parking garage, we want to make sure that we have something that not only functions well, but will be easy, as easy as we can make it to maintain it into the future, and that's what this is to assure for. If there are no other questions, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 1776-R, authorizing execution of contract with Carl Walker in the amount of $46,000 to provide parking consultant services for One Washington Place parking structure.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Mueller, for the approval of the contract with Carl Walker for the parking garage consultant services. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll. Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving to item 20, which is approval of the fireworks permit for the annual Batavia Fourth of July fireworks show, and we have to, by city, issue these on an annual basis if we're going to have such a display, so I'd ask somebody to make a motion. Do you all move?
Second.
Moved by, over, Serone, second by McFadden, for city to issue the permit for the annual Fourth of July fireworks program in Batavia High School in Mooseheart. Kirk call the roll. Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving to item 21, which is Ordinance 17-41, amending Title I, Chapter 11, Section 2 of the Batavia Municipal Code to update the investment policy for investments of public funds. Alderman Atack?
Yes, this change is to add language that allows for a financial institution to provide collateral for deposits, so long as this is part of the Public Investment Act, and approved by the City of Batavia. And this change will allow Batavia to get the best rates that it can with banks, or whatever institution we invest in. Do you have any comments, Peggy? Okay. I move that we approve Ordinance 17-41, amending Batavia Municipal Code to update the City of Batavia investment policy. Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second over here by Alderman Serone, for the approval of Ordinance 17-41 for the update in the investment policy for investments of public funds. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll. Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving to 22, Ordinance 17-47, amending Title III, Chapter III, Section 3-3-10 and Section 3-3-11 of the Batavia Municipal Code to allow a U.S. resident alien to obtain a city liquor license.
I have that.
Atack?
Staff is recommending that we approve this ordinance. Recently, we had an application for a city liquor license from someone who was a U.S. resident alien, but not a naturalized U.S. citizen, and they discussed it and found no reason why we should have that particular provision, so they're recommending that we change it and allow anyone that's a U.S. resident alien to also obtain a liquor license. I move that we approve this ordinance, 17-47. Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Euer, for the appointment, or the approval of Ordinance 17-47 on the liquor license. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll. Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Ordinance 17-47 is approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving to item 23, which is Resolution 17-79-R, approving an amendment to a lease agreement for 2 East Wilson Street, the Tomley Building. Who's got this one?
I have this one.
Alderman Atack?
Okay, Bree Hayes from Fawn Gifts has been in the Tomley Building, and she's had a successful time so far, particularly during the holiday seasons. Her lease is up at the end of December of this year, and she would like a six-month extension so that she can benefit from the holiday season before she decides to find a new location. So, she's asking that her lease expire on January 31st, 2018, and we have agreed to a 5% increase, or a $30 increase per month, and all the other terms remain the same, as I recall. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, that's correct. After the 31st of January, she goes on a month-to-month. Each party has a 30-day notice period if we need to terminate.
Okay, she pays all utilities.
That's correct.
There are no real estate taxes at this time, is that correct?
Taxes on building.
Okay. I move that we approve the proposed amendment to the existing lease at 2 East Wilson Street, Fawn Gifts, Bree Hayes proprietor. Second.
Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of Resolution 17-79-R, approving the amendment and the lease agreement for 2 East Wilson Street. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that, I think that this is one of those things that we do in this town that a lot of people might not know about. And this little incubator business building that we've had, that we, that the city owns, has produced a number of businesses that have gone on and successfully moved out into other spaces in town, and really have been part of the revitalization downtown. So, I think this is really important, that when the opportunities are there like this, that we make these things happen for, you know, somebody that wants to come out and put their heart and soul and everything into a business, and make it happen downtown, and she's doing that, so I really want to applaud that, and I want people to know that that's one of the things the city's doing with some of these buildings we have downtown.
A wonderful addition to our downtown.
Thank you. Can I say something?
Yes, you can.
Just to respond to that, I am so grateful to have this opportunity. I wouldn't be able to have a business downtown if not for the incubator, and I tell, I tell people about it, and that it is through the city that I have this incubator space. People are really excited about it. A lot of people didn't know that that existed, and I don't know how you guys want to run that in the future, but I definitely think that it's, it's a great thing that a lot, I've heard a lot of people have interest moving forward. So, I'm, it's going to be hard to leave that building, just because I love it so much, but I'm ready to, in January 2018, or soon after that, move on and give it to somebody else, so someone else can grow their business.
I just wanted to piggyback on that. Actually, our partners do a great job, Chamber and Main Street. When small businesses come to them and ask, you know, for a spot, if they know that the space is coming available, I think both, both Bree and Kathy Zary were first hooked up through one or the other, the Main Street or the Chamber, so we're getting the word out, and that's the way to do it.
Yeah, one more thing, too.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, too, that I'm proud of you, too, because one of the things that we've gotten back as a community is your volunteerism. So, not only are you a retailer, but you've stepped up and you've volunteered in a lot of other areas, too, which is awesome, so thank you very much.
Anybody else? We have a motion, a second, and a fourth, then, for the continuation of the lease. Kirk call the roll. Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent, so.
Thanks, guys.
Keep up the great job, thank you. Okay, moving to item 24, which is Resolution 17-78-R, authorizing execution of a contract for the 2017 street resurfacing program with Geneva Construction in the amount of $1,433,338. Alderman Wolf, this is your.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I wanted to talk about this tonight, because it is quite a big program this year. We're going to be doing a total of 7.35 miles of city streets will be improved this year during this program. One thing that I did want to talk about is the streets of Elizabeth Street, Forest Avenue, Franklin Street, Hamlin Street, will all be resurfaced utilizing the Community Block Grant Funds through Kane County. That was a hundred thousand dollars, over and above what we had budgeted for this, was from that block grant, to be able to do those streets as well. So we got good prices back on it, so we're getting a lot done this year. With that, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution seventeen dash seventy-eight.
Ken?
Moved by Alderman, Wolf, second by Alderman, Stark, for the approval of the contract with Geneva Construction. Alderman, Brown, you want to make some comments?
Couple of comments. I just want to comment that we are getting some very aggressive pricing, and there's some reasons for that, which we all know the reasons why there's not much state work out there, so a lot of these guys are really going after this work very eagerly. So this did come in roughly three hundred thousand dollars under engineer's estimate. It's unfortunate that we can't expand on what we can do, which we all understand why we talked about at the committee meeting, because of the IDOT control or participation in this. Our budget was somewhere as right around one million, seven hundred thousand dollars, so we are getting a pretty good price out of this. I would like to ask Gary, if he could, though, because we did discuss this at the meeting briefly, and since then, there's been a lot of news and talk on the radio about possibility of road projects shutting down. So could you explain so the committee or the council and the public understand what happens moving forward here now? Whether, you know, this contract will be signed with Geneva Construction, and whether or not it could be stopped, or are we going to wait?
I don't know the latest status of that. So we do plan to move forward with this contract, and the state could, they could still tell us that we'll be stopping, but we're planning right now to move forward. The latest update, I haven't heard from today, and our city engineer, Rahad Bari, is kind of tuned into that, but I don't know the latest update as of today.
Okay. But it is possible that we may not be moving forward with this for some point in time.
Right, the state may tell us that we need to stop. Correct.
I guess my question would be on that. Do we know, we sign the contract, how quickly they're planning on starting, or is it going to take them a month to ramp up?
Well, when we sign a contract, so after a contractor's awarded tonight, if the council likes to award it, the contractor has to get their insurance in place, they have to get their performance bond in place, we have a pre-construction meeting, and if everyone wants to move things along, those things could all move along, and literally, we could be out under construction probably in about ten days. But generally, I mean, it all depends on how busy they are in there, too. So we could try and be out for construction before Fourth of July in order to get up and going.
I believe, Gary, that request for, in the bid documents, there was a completion date of September thirtieth or something like that?
So even if there's a short delay, we may, they can legitimately ask for a delay in the completion date, but in reality, if it's a short delay, we probably can still hit that same completion date.
So bottom line is, it's very good news that we're getting all this work done for this kind of proposal or this kind of a bid, but I just wanted to bring those points out.
Yeah, I mean, most of this is all qualifying under our local contract here, so the state's role in this is just the financial-supported one, I believe. Am I correct in that area?
It's our motor fuel tax.
Right, I know that, yeah.
State administers basically those funds. It's all their role is, really.
And when this, you know, I was with the state transportation secretary, sat next to him last week for a two-hour meeting, and he was sharing with me his concerns about what was going to happen, and that, you know, he's been told on the thirtieth that he shuts IDOT down. Now, that's IDOT, that's not Geneva Construction, and that's not the City of Batavia. You know, when we get into the state money thing, this gets to be a real interesting issue, and when they've done it, last year, I believe, when this first time this thing raised its ugly head, they went and got a court order from, I don't know, the Illinois Supreme Court or something, that they had, the motor fuel tax money was being collected. It was there to do life safety and save lives and have a good quality of road. So the court ordered that the money had to be released to the municipalities, and we got the money. So I'm anticipating if they shut the state down again, we'll be in, somebody's going after another court order, and we'll see where that one drags out at, but that's where we're sitting. Okay, I guess we need a vote on that one, then. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Motion's approved, twelve yes, no-nos, two absences. Moving item number twenty-five, which is approval allowance for a six a.m. start for the Seaman's site remediation activities. Who's got this one? Alderman, Wolf, is this your?
I've got it, Your Honor.
Alderman, Brown?
Yep, I've got it. This is a little bit of an unusual request that staff brought on to us, and they were approached by the people that are going to be cleaning up the Seaman's property for this request. We did discuss it quite a bit at the committee of the whole meeting as to what our thoughts were on extending the work hours and starting them at six o'clock rather than seven o'clock. They also requested an earlier start time on Saturday. Some of the things that they said that they would not do, which is what we considered, is that they wouldn't have any audible horns before the hour of seven o'clock, they wouldn't be doing any major excavation, they wouldn't be backing up trucks and having backup alarms, they wouldn't be banging the buckets and loading dirt and such. So that obviously was the reason for a lot of the conversation. What exactly are they going to be doing that won't make any noise? But we discussed it, we thought, kind of generally, you know, let's give it a try. We're trying to get that site cleaned up. They claim that they need this extra time so that they can get the majority of their activities done before the school year starts, as the designated truck route is going to be coming out onto Wilson Street, and they'll be doing quite a lot of trucking out and trucking in. So it's a good thing to see this happening, because we've been long awaiting this final cleanup and final spreading of topsoil, and then they're going to be spreading grass seed on it, and then it'll be maintained. The parking lot is also going to be removed, so there will be no longer any hard surface out there whatsoever, so it'll finally come to this point that we've been trying to get it to for a long time. During the meeting, I think there were quite a few, including myself, that were on the fence. Should we vote for it? Shouldn't we vote for, or vote to allow it, or not, or vote to not allow it? We ended up voting to allow it, to make the recommendation to the city council to allow this early start. As soon as I left here that evening, I started having second thoughts on it, because per our city attorney's recommendation, we should bring it to tonight's meeting, so that, per the council's recommendation, how is this going to be monitored? And we decided at the committee level to let the community development director, Scott Buonin, who's standing up here tonight, have the authorization, if it gets out of hand, to shut it down and go back to the seven o'clock start. So our city attorney thought that we should have that formal type of recommendation for this community development director to have that authority. And like I say, I started having second thoughts on it, as I thought, you know, that's really putting a lot of, responsibility isn't the right word, but what exactly is it that the community development director is going to be responsible for? And how is he going to make that determination as to whether or not he should put a stop to this and return it back to the seven o'clock start? Is it one person calling that says, "I've got a complaint," or is it five people? What is it that's going to draw him to that conclusion? So I called Scott, and we talked about this, and they coincidentally, he and the department have had conversation during their staff meeting with the police department. And because the police department are the people that are on the street twenty-four seven, they're the ones that are going to be monitoring the issue along with, if we get calls from neighbors. They'll be communicating with Scott right off the bat that, you know, hey, at six oh five, there's backup alarms going on, something like that. So Scott assured me that he feels very comfortable, and he can certainly speak, that between he and the police department, they'll be able to monitor this, they've got a good handle on how they're going to handle it. So Scott, do you want to add anything to that?
No, the only thing I would add is that we have communicated already with the project folks regarding this, and they will not be doing any work on the weekends earlier than the normal hours. We've advised them that that will not happen, so. But yes, we'll be monitoring the complaints, if we get any, with police, because obviously they're going to be out there in the morning. We do have a code enforcement officer, she starts relatively early also, so she can probably be out there, too, if we need to. But if we, you know, see and hear things that are in violation of, you know, what they've agreed to, we would shut that down and make them start at the normal hours as per code.
Okay. So with that, per our city attorney's recommendation, I recommend that we authorize the community development director to monitor and define the scope of work that's been authorized, or that the committee discussed, and have the authority to return the work hours back to seven a.m. if deemed necessary. Make that in form of a motion?
Make that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Second?
We have a motion by Brown, second by Mueller, for the allowance of the Seaman activity as per Alderman Brown's motion and condition. Any discussion?
Your Honor? I, you know, I've kind of, I've gone out there a couple times and looked at it, and I think, depending on how they lay it out, where they do this, and what they listed in their list of the way they want to do things, I think it can be accomplished. I think they can accomplish, you know, an extra hour's worth of work a day without creating tons of noise, and I can see where they would go out, have everything ready to go on the trucks at the end of the one day, come back and just loop the trucks through there to load them up for the first hour to get that whatever's dug out already off the site. So I think that, in my mind, I think they can do this. Being one of the closest people on the council to the property, I think I can hopefully not hear it, and we'll get it done as quick as they can.
Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
ATAC?
Nay.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Uer?
Nay.
Sarone?
Aye.
McFadden?
No.
That one's approved, nine yes, three no, two absences. All right, going to twenty-six, the administrators' report.
Good evening. The first thing I would like to do is share a letter that is the conclusion of, we had asked a law firm to take a look at Prairie State and see if they could give us any recommendations on how we could achieve a more balanced and diversified portfolio. We've come to the conclusion of that process. I shared the attorney-client privileged information in the executive session at the committee of the whole meeting, but I have also asked the firm to prepare a letter that we would be able to present publicly, so if you would allow me, I'd like to read that letter for the record. It is regarding litigation regarding the Prairie State Energy Campus. Dear Ms. Newman, the City of Batavia City Council retained General M Block LLP and Mayor Brown LLP to review the city's transition from a regulated electric market to its current position in an open market, and to advise the city on how best to meet its goal of achieving a balanced and diversified energy portfolio. During that representation, our attorneys evaluated the possibility of the city pursuing litigation in order to help it achieve those objectives. Based upon that review, for the reasons stated in closed session in our privileged and confidential memorandum, we believe the city would face substantial obstacles to any meaningful monetary recovery in litigation related to its participation in the Prairie State Energy Campus at this time. Should you have any questions or wish to discuss our evaluation in further detail, we would be happy to do so. Signed sincerely, Michael A. Scodro of Mayor Brown LLP and Clifford Berlow of General M Block LLP. And I have a record for, copy.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments on it? We, I think we thoroughly discussed it the other night.
I think it's just another step in the process where, you know, as one of those that was on the council when we approved getting into the Prairie State Energy Campus, it's one of those things that, you know, at least in my mind, we made the commitment to try to look for any possible way we can make things better on the electric utility side, and we've left no stone unturned at this point. And at this point, we don't have anything good to report. There's nothing more we can do with it right now.
At least the thing has totally calmed itself down, down there, so there's.
It's running at good efficiency now, I'm happy with that.
So what else do you have for us, Laura?
I have an update on a few of the projects. Earlier tonight, we were talking about the branding project, and the Branding Steering Committee will be meeting Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, for a final report back from our branding consultant on the first phase of the project. It is what's called the brand architecture presentation, so to pull together everything that they learned and to present us with an idea of what that, that brand for Batavia might look like. And so I look forward to being able to present the results of that project to you after that. The West Side Water Tower is scheduled to be washed this week, so that will look brand spanking new after that, I'm sure. A lot of, I keep hearing chainsaws all the time, and I look out my window, and I can see that there's a tremendous amount of clearing that's going on adjacent to the new temporary parking lot on River Street. And it's really, the project is looking very nice to be able to see through that bank, but, you know, you can see the few trees that are remaining. I know that there's some concern in the community about that tree, that dead tree in which the cormorants perch, and if it hadn't, if, in case people hadn't heard in previous meetings, that tree is so rotten, it is in danger of at any time of falling into the river. But we do recognize that it's kind of a cool thing to have those cormorants perching in that tree, and so Public Works is going to be looking into constructing a perch for those birds, so that we can continue to enjoy them in our downtown area. Also, the concrete was cut along the parking lot. I was actually out there about a week and a half ago for the farmer's market, and a gentleman was riding by on his bike, and he stopped just to admire how, and remarked to me how nice things really turned out with that temporary parking lot. I mean, I know it's just a parking lot, but it really looks like progress, you know? And also, I think that the concrete wall there turned out really nice. I'm already using it as a bench, but I guess Public Works has future plans to actually make it into a seating area and with planters there. I think, I think it'll turn out to look very nice. Also, wanted to let you know that the first of two public service announcements were filmed in collaboration with the Police Department and BATV. Detective Michelle Langston served as a subject matter expert, helping us to record information for pedestrians and bicyclists and motorists on how to use those crosswalks safely. So those videos will be edited and broadcast on BATV, and also, I'll also be hosting a partner video to go along with that on bike safety in the crosswalks, to be filmed in the next couple of weeks. Finally, I wanted to give you an update on some of our art projects that we have, the last two sculptures that are to be installed on the Donovan Bridge. The science installment is called Fractal, that's near-ready to install, and Spintronic is ready to install. We're going to have a ceremony associated with the installation of those two sculptures, and we are meeting with Bill McGrath tomorrow to determine what an appropriate date might be in either the first or the second week. In July is what we're targeting. I'll let you know within the next, at the next meeting, what date has been selected. And then, also, Storehenge, the fabricator who is making the two panels for Storehenge has obtained the material that then has to be cut, and they're expecting to fabricate the panels next week. Does anybody have any questions for me?
What, Your Honor? Those panels are for what? What's the purpose?
There is a front panel, and the front panel is a story of the historic businesses in our downtown community, and then the panel on the other side is a collage of historic pictures of those businesses.
And then, did you have a chance, I hate to be a pest on this, but I will anyway, did you have a chance to talk about anymore? Is there going to be lighting done? What else is going to be done on this structure?
I'm not sure on lighting on Storehenge. Spintronic does have a lighting component, and we're determining whether the lighting component of that will be installed. Gary, can you, there's an issue with the lighting, that it can't be installed soon.
So we need to coordinate with the artist and McGrath for the sculpture on the bridge, because the commemorative plaque actually would then partially block the access to lighting. So once the lighting's in there, it's fine, but we can't do the plaque before the lighting. So that part we need to coordinate, that will coordinate before installation occurs. Lighting on Storehenge, we have all the electric there, so it's really just now a matter of the lighting person, if they choose to light that, we're already all prepped from the city's.
Okay.
It's ready to go.
I just think we should try to come to a conclusion on this.
I would love to.
I mean, I know that's been a project that's been a lot, it started out as a volunteer project, but it's been going on for years, and it's nice to finish something up and move on to something else.
Absolutely, and I think it'll be wonderful once it's installed. It's been too long in coming, but I'm happy to hear that there's some progress, and I, too, will be working diligently to get it completed.
So I'm going to suggest that, while we're still talking about that, that we plan to take a cow walk, I'll call it, like we've been doing, and let's look at Tuesday, July eleventh, and let's put Stonehenge as the first thing that we're going to walk to, and hopefully we'll have an update or all the plans or suggestions, so that the council, if we need to make any final decisions, we can do them right then and there and get this over with. Because several of you, and you're not saying, talking, but that's fine, have expressed to me in the last couple of weeks, you're getting pretty frustrated by this lack of accomplishment at this thing, and this has been, you know, we're about two years behind schedule here, as near as I can figure on this thing, so we need to get it over with. I got quite upset last week, I came down there, and somebody had erected or hung two posters on the panels of it, so I stopped at the ice cream store and went over there and pulled the posters off, and there haven't been any more posters on there, but, I mean, that's what it's kind of, you know, revolved down into as we're hanging posters on it now, because nobody else knows what it is or what its, its purpose is supposed to be, and it really is quite an impressive story of the early foundry industries in Batavia and their artistic endeavors that they did. You know, they're making the front of Marshall Fields and everything else in Chicago in this town, and, you know, that never has been highlighted, which is what, one of the efforts was what we're trying to do with this thing is kind of tell the, you know, the very positive story of the foundry industry in our town and what artists were in those foundries that made those patterns that turned this stuff out. So we really want to highlight that, and for some reason, we just seem to have gotten off track here somehow, and we really need to get this thing over and done with. Every summer when we do it, Windmill City Days, I'm asked three or four times, what is that green thing down there? And so, I mean, we need to get this over with.
Right. Do you think, Laura, that these panels will be something that'll be installed by the July eleventh date, or?
I can check tomorrow. I would hope so.
Why don't you see if you can, because I know you just mentioned your meeting with Bill, and he's kind of spearheading this, maybe you could try to come up with a timeline on when everything's going to be done, and give that to us in a report.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
What time do you want to do the walk?
What time do you go? Six thirty, seven o'clock? Six thirty? Let's do six thirty on the eleventh. And we'll have a couple other things to look at that night, too, but we're going to focus in on Stonehenge.
Gary, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Can I just say something briefly about our window out here? For the general public who's out walking on the River Walk, they'll notice there's one random window on the east side of the building. That's a mock-up, so it's being done as part of the bidding process for our window project, and it is purposely kind of being done to walk the contractors through the process so that they can then prepare better bids for the city. Can I just say something briefly about our window out here? For the general public who's out walking on the River Walk, they'll notice there's one brand-new window on the east side of the building. That's a mock-up, so it's being done as part of the bidding process for our window project, and it is purposely kind of being done to walk the contractors through the process, so that they can then prepare better bids for the city. If you have a keen eye, you'll note that the dimensions of it are a little bit off. So, we know, we know that, and we have to adjust that, and that's kind of the purpose of the mock-up, is to work through issues like that. But if you step back a little farther out, and you just notice the overall appearance, it's going to really change this building and make this building look amazing when all the windows are installed. So, yes, there's a, there's a dimensional issue there. That'll be fixed with the project, and we'll make sure everything is perfect in the project. But just step back and look at the larger scope, and it's going to be great, great window.
Anybody else? Anything else, Laura?
The only other thing is, if you check the Facebook page, there was a really nice write-up on the internet about the Donovan Bridge and the sculptures that are there and the sculptures that are coming. It's called Outdoor Art in Chicago, and the link is on Facebook. It's a really nice article. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. The committee of the whole meeting for tomorrow evening has been canceled. Plan Commission is scheduled for the next meeting, which will be Wednesday, the 21st of this month. That starts at 7:00. And then, Historic Preservation is scheduled for this coming Monday. They start at 5:30. And that's all I have. The next committee, the whole meeting, will be, I believe, the 27th. It's the last Tuesday of the month. So, all I have.
Thank you. Government Services, Alderman Atak?
I don't have anything to report for this upcoming month.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
No report this time.
Alderman, who's?
And no, no report for utilities.
Public Utilities. All right. Other business? Do we have any other business to come before us? Okay, quickly, on 29, the mayor's report, I just want to share with you. I was at the State Transportation Policy Committee meeting down Willis Tower last week, and I did sit next to the state transportation secretary. And he announced to the group that he had been told by the governor's office that if there's no budget on July 1st, they shut the IDOT jobs down. And so, I took that with some degree of concern from the perspective that there are two IDOT jobs out there right now that directly will impact Batavia. One of them is, they are going to resurface and put in the handicap ramps on the curbs on Illinois Route 31 from Main Street in Batavia down to Maple Avenue in North Aurora. And that has been bid and scheduled to be worked on, and I think that job's going to get delayed now because of this. The other one is over on the east side, and that's Illinois Route 25, which there is a similar resurfacing job along with sidewalk or curb lowering for handicap. And that's supposed to go from Main Street or Route 64 in St. Charles, south through, the south end of St. Charles, through the entire Route 25 route through Geneva, and come into Batavia, and come down to Wilson Street. And that's where it'll stop. And as you may remember, last year, the 25 was done south of Batavia. So, over a couple year period, we were getting all Route 25 done. That one's going to be impacted. The one that I, because I had a chance to talk very briefly with the state transportation secretary about our issue with the flashing crossing signals, and that we had had an accident, and, you know, he rolled his eyes when I told him that. He, you know, he says that they are seriously trying to study this at IDOT, and they're trying to, but there's a lot of issues with this. It's like, if you think about it, what do you do when, if you have a signal there and immediately you hit it and it goes flashing red? The reaction is going to be, they're afraid, there's going to be a bunch of rear-end accidents where people are going to slam on their brakes right away. So, you're going to have to, if you do this, you're probably going to have to have the existing signal flash at you for five or 10 seconds, then it'll transition into red, and then you'll have so many seconds to get yourself across there. But then, the next, there's a whole bunch of stuff. So, they're trying to work through it. But where I'm somewhat dismayed is, is that I'm afraid if we shut IDOT down next week, all this research and all this work on this thing will get backlog and set back however long we got those guys out of business down there, because they are doing work statewide on this, but they're not going to be doing any state, any work if they have to shut the agency down on the 1st of June, or July. So, we are going to have some impacts in this town from this state budget, and that is really going to be kind of in our face. And I mean, certainly, as it's already been brought up, you know, we don't know what this impact is really going to be on the budget. You know, are they going to go get emergency court orders to reduce, release MFT, or, you know, some of the other fees that we get? You know, another good one is, what do you do with the Secretary of State's driver's license agency if you're not able to sell license plates after the 1st of July? There's some really interesting stuff here as to what we're going to do, and, you know, I don't want to get into the politics of it, but we are, we are going to have some impacts here that are going to be immediate, and they're kind of right in our face as we move forward here, if they do go forward with the shutdown of the state government. So, more to come, as they say in the Tonight